The public hearing this evening in accordance with Governor Charles D. Baker's March 10, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A and 20, the Quincy City Council is convening the public hearing via remote conferencing services, which will also air on Quincy Access Television, QATV, Channel 9, Government Access. Madam Clerk, could you please read in the open meeting law?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged impermissible.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would like to call to order the Monday, June 1, 6:00 PM, public hearing on Council Order 2020-012, ordinance to revise, consolidate, amend, supplement, and codify the general ordinances of the city of Quincy that is currently pending in the ordinance committee. Madam Clerk, would you like to speak in regards to this request?
Yes, thank you Chairwoman Mahoney, and thank you all. I'd like to first stop by saying that this has been a labor of love for the last three or four years, and I want to give a big thank you out to Jen Manning, the Clerk of Committees, who has done an outstanding job with me on this. And it started with an old broken down book that had fallen out pages that we took, and we know how important it is to the city. And so we started to go through it and realized that it was bigger than just the two of us. So with that, I did reach out and find a company that could handle a city of our size and the ordinances that we have, and do a lot of really good work, editorial, legal analysts, manuscript, which all came before us, Jen and I, and we locked ourselves in the office and went through it literally page by page. And we worked with every department in the city of Quincy and got some really important legal questions answered and brought back and forth to General Code and back to us, and we analyzed it and we got the answers. And I'm so proud to bring it forward this evening. It's the adoption, it's revised, it's codified, it's consolidated, it's updated, it's the ordinances of the city of Quincy and how important that is to all of us and the residents of the city of Quincy. And knowing all of that, what we had online previously was so out of date that it was hard to follow. So we have, you know, we're bringing this before you, we hope that you like it, we made some changes that were needed, like, for instance, we put previously adopted Chairman to Chairperson, Building Department to Inspection Services, Board of Health to Health Commissioner, Park and Department to Commissioner of Natural Resources, and on and on. Those little things, just to clean it up, just to make it the most effective tool that we have going forward. And it's ready to go, and we're really proud of it. It'll be, if it goes forward this evening, it'll be about, once, if the mayor signs it, it'll be about one to two weeks before it's up on our website, and it will be up to date all the time. We'll maintain it through the Clerk's office, and we'll never get behind again. So, you know, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay. So at this point, what I'd like to do is I would like to ask anybody wishing to speak in favor or opposition to please state their name and address. If you have video conference in, you'll find in the bottom right-hand corner a hand that you can raise your hand, and you can speak at that point, or if you have dialed in, you can dial *9, and we can call on you in that manner. It looks like John Rodolphy, John has raised his hand.
Okay, I think I am muted. Am I unmuted?
You are unmuted.
Okay. Can you see me?
We can't see you, but we can hear you, John. So could you just read in your name and address for the record?
My name is John Rodofill of 62 Grimwald Road in Quincy, Mass. And basically, I think Jen and Nicole did do a great job on a huge update. I went through the whole thing very quickly. I didn't go through with the fine-tooth comb, that's not what my job is. But the couple places where I figure I do have some expertise are in zoning and planning. And first, I'd just like to thank Mr. Marty Akins, who's the Chairman of the Zoning Board, and Mr. Richard Mead, who's the Chairman of the Planning Board, who both do a great job for the city, along with Nicole Crispo, who's the Chairman of the License Board, also does a wonderful job. And basically, my first thing was Section 349-2. It's amended to change within 100 feet of said resources to within a buffer zone as defined by the Department of Environmental Protection in 310 CMR. So after doing a little bit of research, you know, I found out that yes, it's the same number. Right now, it's currently 100 in the Department of Environmental Protection. So in theory, that might be no change. But when I drive through Boston, I noticed they're building stuff closer to the water, and who knows if the Department of Environmental Protection might loosen their standards, and they might change that. So I'm not sure why the 100 feet, we can't just keep it in there. If the Department of Environmental Protection lowers it, and we want to lower it after them, fine. If they hire it, then we can hire it after them. I don't think that number changes more than, you know, every time there's a, you know, a 100-year flood or something. So my other thing was on, you know, again, you know, one thing I would like, it's hard, kind of have to cross-reference and go back to the zoning code, and go back to the, you know, wherever you're making a change in the ordinance, because within the document that was referenced from the ordinance which was posted, I could not see the old things. So again, I didn't, I didn't know exactly what was being amended all the time. But the one in 3.2.3, one in parentheses, it's about tool sheds and garages. Basically, I think what was taken out was, "Any such building shall be located at least 10 feet away from other buildings or structures." So look into that one, because we want to make sure buildings aren't too close together, so they don't start fires. And it's, you know, we really have to protect our neighbors. The other point is, the Section 4.1.2 is amended. "Multi-family residences and mixed use of buildings are permitted within a business Z district by special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals pursuant to Section 9.4 with approval site plan from the Planning Board in accordance with Section 9.5." So I think that is the new language that's in there, and I'm still confused.
So John, I just wanted to let you know that this is just to codify the changes that were approved in City Council in the past. So I'm not trying to interrupt you, but the amendments that are going through have been passed in City Council. If there are anything to be changed, it would be done through an amendment to those ordinances.
So these are what? These are all?
It's the codification.
That have been passed?
Yes, the codification of all approved ordinances that are being updated to give the most up-to-date references online for people to read. And if there's going to be any changes, they would have to come before ordinance and be revoked on.
Well, I mean, the one more thing I would like to add is that when something is referenced that a new building in residential A or B can only be 35 feet above grade, sometimes they say where the grade is, is where like the flood line level is. So sometimes they might build a house out, house neck, 10 feet up on a dock, and then go up 35 feet. And I just think that we have to get a little bit more specific within the zoning code, and that will help protect the neighbors better. So I mean, other than that, like I said, I think it's a fabulous job. If the thing was definitely outdated, there were a lot of, a lot of things that don't even exist anymore, like residential D. So thank you, and I really don't have anything else to say.
Excellent. Thank you very much, John. All right. Do we have anybody else who is, who would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this ordinance? If you have dialed in, please do *9, and if not, you can raise your hand in the bottom right-hand corner of the video. And with that, I'm not seeing anybody else. Once again, *9, or dial in, or raise your hand in the right-hand corner. But I'm going to move on. There's been no written correspondence that has been received by the Clerk of Committees for this item. And with that, I'm seeing no further public comment, so I would like to close the public hearing at 6:11. Thank you. Okay, moving on, I'd like to open the ordinance meeting tonight, Monday, June 1, the meeting of the City Quincy Council Ordinance Committee. I'd like to call it to order. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Counsel Kane.
Present.
Counsel Kroll. Counsel DeBona. Counsel Harris.
Here.
Counsel Liang.
Present.
Counsel McCarthy.
Present.
Counsel Palmucci. Counsel Phelan.
Present.
Chairman Mahoney.
Present.
Seven members, quorum.
Thank you very much.
Present as well, present.
Yep. Okay. I just wanted to mention that Counselor Kroll did reach out to me to let me know that he would not be able to be in attendance this evening. He had a family commitment, and he apologizes for not being here. With that, the matters before us this evening, first on the agenda is 2020-012, ordinance to revise, consolidate, amend, supplement, and codify the general ordinance of the city of Quincy. We just closed out a public hearing on that, and what I'd like to do is open up the discussion for my committee's committee members to ask any questions that they may have in regards to the ordinance.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by William Harris. Counselor Harris, any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll in favor?
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Kroll. Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci. Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Counsel Chairman Mahoney.
Yes.
Seven members, seven members passes.
Thank you very much. Next in the agenda is Order 2020-012. This is an ordinance amending Title 12 Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Spaces, Chapter 12.16, recreational vessel towing notification requirements. And we have Lieutenant Bob Gillan here tonight to discuss this amendment.
Good evening, members of the Council. Good evening, members of the Council. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. I'm Bob Gillan, Lieutenant Quincy Police Department Marine Unit Supervisor. Thank you for allowing me to join your meeting tonight. I'm here to answer your questions relevant to requests for change in the city ordinance to require companies that tow boats on the harbor to follow the same protocols as companies that tow cars on the streets of Quincy have to. Just in a way of background, each year, derelict or abandoned vessels show up up here in Quincy. They're either driven here by owners, or sometimes they're towed here by commercial vessel towing companies. Once the owners walk away from their financial responsibilities, the city usually has to pay for the very expensive disposal of these vessels. These vessels contain hazardous materials, and they often cause damage to the environmentally sensitive areas of Quincy Harbor. If you review and approve this ordinance change, we'll send a clear signal that we're not going to continue to let this happen in Quincy. The Council has approved thousands and thousands of dollars to clean up the harbor and the beaches of Quincy through the years. This is not a problem that just happens in Quincy. From Maine to Key West, Florida, you go travel the coastline, you can often see derelict vessels on beaches and on environmentally sensitive areas. So I'm asking your careful consideration of passing this ordinance, and I'm glad to answer any of your questions.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant Gillan. Are there any questions regarding the ordinance this evening? Counsel McCarthy?
Thank you, Jim and Mahoney. Just a statement, first of all, Bob Gillan, Lieutenant Gillan, does a tremendous job with the Marine Unit, as everyone, everyone knows. And, you know, he stays on top of not only big things, but the small things, and makes sure that his eyes are dotted, there's a T's across. Bob has asked me a couple of times to make sure this made the agenda, and it really helps the city and helps Bob. And bottom line, it saves us a ton of money and a ton of headache in regards to getting dragged out through the city solicitor's office, etc. This basically keeps the maritime salvage and towing companies on their toes to report all vessels to the Quincy Police. The companies that tow vessels upon the waterways of Quincy would have to follow the same procedures that are required by companies that tow cars. The ordinance is there to prevent water-based vessel towing companies from towing abandoned derelict vessels into Quincy waters. And it goes on and on in regards to saving us money, and putting Bob in a great position with his crew on the Marine Police to keep an eye on things and clean up a headache that's been here for years. So I fully support this ordinance change, support Mr. Gillan, and I think it's a tremendous job that they do down there in regards to all the water space, all the beaches, everything we have in the city of Quincy. So I'd like to make a motion to approve, if it already hasn't been made, and just thank Bob for his work day in and day out.
Thank you very much, Counsel McCarthy. Is there any questions, or does anybody would like to discuss anything in regards to this ordinance? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll in favor?
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Kroll. Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris. Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Counsel Chairman Mahoney.
Yes.
Six members, positive recognition.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant Gillan, for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you, Dave.
Okay, moving on to Order 2020-052, ordinance amending Title 13 Public Services, Chapter 13.12 on utilities and small cells. In regards to this ordinance, we are just really amending one section, which is 13.12110. And what we're trying to do is just add the definition of utility pole by adding the words privately owned before the words utility pole, or publicly owned. That's the amendment.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counsel McCarthy. Any questions on the motion? No, no questions. Could we call the, call the roll, please?
Sure. Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris. Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Chairman Mahoney.
Yes.
Six members, positive recognition.
And with that, that is all I have on the agenda for this evening. So I'd like to close, make a motion to close out the ordinance meeting.
Also?
Motion, motion to close.
All right. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, could you read the open meeting law, please?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged impermissible.
Thank you. And in accordance with Governor Charles D. Baker's March 10, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the Quincy City Council is holding this City Council meeting via remote conferencing services, and it is being aired on Quincy Access Television, QATV, Channel QATV-9, Government Access. Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda, please.
First item on the agenda is 2020-090, a resolve, Quincy District Court, possible use of city property.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and acknowledge Counsel Palmucci.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam President. I think the resolution sort of speaks for itself. Everyone's had a chance to read it. Just, my involvement in the court system, not tremendous, I don't do a tremendous amount of work in Quincy District Court, very little, in fact, but I know all across Commonwealth, there's quite a problem with, with court being able to function properly, given the COVID-19 security measures or public safety measures that need to be in place. And Quincy District Court, having been in there, anyone's ever been in there, it's really a small cramped building with a lot of people in it on a regular basis. So someone suggested to me that there may be some city property that could be utilized in a non- intrusive way, non-intrusive for the city, that could be utilized by the Quincy District Court, either in the short term to get things back on track, or in the long term. So the purpose of the resolution is just to ask the Merida to look into whether or not there's any feasible way in which the city could offer space to the trial court for Quincy District Court. So I would, I would move, I would move passage and referral to Public Safety and Ordinance Committee.
Thank you. So we have a motion to move passage as well as to move it into Public Safety and Ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Counsel McCarthy. Is there any discussion or any questions on this item? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Thank you. Motion passes, and will be moved to Public Safety and Ordinance for follow-up. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Next item on the agenda is number two, 2020-091, a resolve for Father Bill's relocation update.
Thank you. I'm going to recognize Counsel Palmucci.
Thank you. I don't have, I don't have the resolution in front of me, so I forget what I specifically asked for. But this, this is kind of based in two parts. I think, I think everybody knows how successful the depopulation of Father Bills has been for the city. I think I've said this before, but nationally, the rate for infection in the homeless population is like 30%. In Quincy, it's 5% to 6%. And a large part of that comes from Father Bill and the mayor's, Father Bill's place in the mayor's work very early on to depopulate the shelter. I think it's been a tremendous success in terms of keeping a very vulnerable population safe. And the more people in our community, homeless or not homeless, COVID, the worse off we all are. So the purpose of this resolution was to see what the plan is for the future in terms of Father Bills. And separate from that is the plan for the new Public Safety Headquarters, where we are essentially relocating Father Bills to a new location, 3839 Broad Street, whether or not there is an opportunity to do something different, or to advance our plans in terms of relocation of that Father Bills. So the purpose of this, this resolution is just that, and to ask the administration to update us on whether or not any, any additional actions can be taken relative to the depopulation and the relocation of Father Bills. And I would move, move for, I'd move approval and ask that if you refer to Public Safety Housing and Ordinance Committee.
Second by Bill Harris.
Thank you. So we have a motion to move approval and move it to Public Safety Housing and Ordinance, second by Counsel Harris. Any questions or discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item is number three, 2020-092, a gift for $50 from Angela Dixon Cavallazzo to the Quincy Police Department.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counsel McCarthy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Kane. Any questions or comments on this motion?
Just to send a letter of thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Rewill. Okay, Madam Clerk, well, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item is number four, 2020-093, a gift for $100 from Peta Signarella to Quincy Police Department for mental health education.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second by Counsel Kane. Any questions or comments on this item?
Just a letter of thank you.
You got it, sir. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, seeing none. Item passes. Okay, so that was the last item that we had on the formal agenda here. We have a motion to approve previous meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counsel McCarthy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the meetings have been approved. Communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers, and city boards. Okay, seeing none. Unfinished business in proceeding meeting. Okay, moving on. Reports of committees. Counsel Mahoney?
Hi. So we had a ordinance committee meeting earlier this evening, and I wanted to make a motion for several of things and take them out of committee. So starting with Order 2020-012, the ordinance to revise, consolidate, amend, supplement, and codify the general ordinance of the city of Quincy. It was approved in committee. I'd like to take it out of committee and make a motion to approve this evening.
Second the motion. To approve.
Second the motion, Bill Harris.
Second by Counsel Harris. Thank you. Madam Clerk, is this an item that we can do a voice mode on, or do we have to do a roll call on this item?
Roll call vote.
Okay, could you roll a call, please?
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Kroll.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
No.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Seven members. Item passes.
Moving on to, moving on to Order 2020-016, ordinance amending Title 12 Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Spaces, Chapter 12.16, recreational vessel towing notification, notification and requirements. This was in committee earlier, and I'd like to move for passage to make a motion to approve.
Second the motion.
We have a motion to approve, second by Counsel Harris. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Kroll. Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
No.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Seven members.
Thank you. Item passes.
Okay, and moving on to Order 2020-052, ordinance amending Title 13 Public Services, Chapter 13.12, utilities and small cells. This also was approved in committee earlier, and I'm making a motion to approve this evening.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel McCarthy. Okay, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Kroll. Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
No.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
No.
Counsel Phelan. Counsel Phelan. President Liang.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Counsel Phelan.
Mute.
Oh, there you are.
Thumbs up, thumbs down, Chuck.
See, now we can see you and we can't hear you. See, now we can see you and we can't hear you.
Unmute.
There you are.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
President Liang.
On my wife's iPad, so I'm not that familiar.
No worries. Madam Clerk, yes, that's a yes for me.
Six members passes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, do you have any other items in your, in your committee?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports from any other committees? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Presentations of petitions, memorials and remonstrance. Counsel Palmucci.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize the national unrest across the nation over the murder of George Floyd in Minneapolis. While personally, and suppose I can speak for all of us, you know, we don't condone violence or destruction of personal property or the wholesale labeling of police officers as criminals or murderers or oppressors. I do think it's important that we recognize that the motivation, the heartfelt motivation and the true problems that exist in our country regarding inequality and injustice that folks face. It happens in our community. While we don't have situations like has occurred in other parts of the country in terms of police brutality, we have an excellent police department of folks from our community, made up of our community. There, you wouldn't have to look far to find inequality in general, whether that be economic inequality, housing inequality, just look no further than the rates of COVID-19 infection and mortality. There is a problem in America. There's a problem that exists in Quincy, exists in every community across the country. And I just wanted to take a moment tonight to recognize that struggle, recognize, was that the buzzer that I'm done? Recognize the folks who are out there protesting in a positive way for change. I know that there's a vigil schedule tomorrow night at 6:00 in Quincy. I'll certainly be there. I trust, you know, many folks from our community will be to, in a very peaceful way, lend our support and show our solidarity for the movement towards equality and better treatment in other communities by police officers. Smarter people than I have said, if there is no justice for others, there's no justice for you. If other civil rights are being violated, you can't have your civil rights. If the civil rights of other people are being violated, then our civil rights are violated. So just wanted to take a moment just to recognize that, recognize the moment we find ourselves in history and lend our support to those who are making peaceful protests across the country.
Thank you, Counsel. I appreciate that. Counsel DeBona will go to you, and then Counsel McCarthy will go to you next.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President. I'm sad to hear that Fred Abdullah passed away at the age of 58 on Friday, May 22. And, you know, 32-year career at the Norfolk County Sheriff's Office, retired as a lieutenant in 2017, was trying to enjoy some retirement, and he passed away at the age of 58, you know. Kind of sad, if you guys remember over at Thousand Southern Ivy, Chickie Abdullah, that's her son, and then you have Abby Ash, brother, and James Abdullah, you know, he left his wife as well, Mary Beth Maddie Abdullah, and the loving son of Abraham Abdullah of Norwood. So just condolences to the Abdullah family going through some tough times. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel DeBona. Counsel McCarthy?
Yeah, just on the subject that Counsel Palmucci brought up, last night, I think everyone hoped and prayed that it was going to be quiet, and it turned out to be disgraceful. I don't know if I can speak for everyone, but I think I can, that the police department here in Quincy has, we have their back, they have our back. And Counsel Palmucci mentions tomorrow night, hopefully it'll be peaceful. I'm a guy that looks at this with all lives matters, all of them. It was a shame what happened in Minnesota. It should have never happened. I'm sure that will all be brought to the forefront with those offices out in Minnesota. But I look at it that all lives matter. And so I hope that the protesters, if they do show up tomorrow night here, just send a message, and that's all. Because last night was disgraceful to see. I didn't think it was going to happen in Boston. I thought we were gonna set the example there for a while last night, and the wheels came off pretty quick, and it was just about fires and looting, and the protest message went out the window. So that's all I'll say about that. I hope everyone's safe tomorrow night, especially law enforcement and public safety that'll be out there, along with the residents that come. And I hope it goes off without a hitch. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Mahoney?
Thank you. It is on the same subject matter. If anybody had a chance today, the Floyd family actually came out and spoke on behalf of Mr. Floyd, who has lost his life in a tragic way, asking for people to do peaceful protests and for everybody else to go home. Because really, in this particular case, we all have to stand unified. And as Counsel Palmucci did say, our civil rights are only our civil rights if we all participate in it, and justice has to be for all. And we need to remember that. And I'm hoping that tomorrow night, that Quincy, in the past, we have been able to have protests where this is where our founding fathers actually built and built this country. And, you know, if there was ever a time, is the time for tomorrow night for us to come out and be together and be peaceful and be together as one for this. And I'm really hoping that the city can come together and that the people who come out will remember and respect what the Floyd family is asking for, and that is for nonviolence and to stand together. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, just want to make sure that I didn't miss anything else for this section for the presentation of petitions, memorials and remonstrances. Counsel Harris?
Thank you. And I appreciate what has been said previous to me speaking. And I can only hope that, you know, in my lifetime, other than Mr. McCarthy, we're only a month apart, but, you know, it's sad to see, it's sad to see, though, what's transpiring through this period of time. But with that, I have a remonstrance, I'm sorry, of a friend of all of ours, Debbie Coughlin's dad. His name is Ken Sullivan, Kenneth Sullivan. He was, to me, Ken Junior was one of my best friends growing up. I've known the Coughlins, Jan Coughlin, Debbie Coughlin, Betty Ann, his, Ken's daughters, and his mother was a friend of my mother's. They were in the altar guild together at St. Margaret's Church in Dorchester. Ken Sullivan, Debbie's dad, has passed. And I just, we all know her, and it's really one of those things that, you know, during all this time, it's just too bad. Ken was such a, when I tell you, going into his house, he was part of my life growing up in Dorchester to a point, because he was one of my friends who was in my wedding and I was in his wedding, and he was at my wedding. And it was really, it's really sad for me. And all I can say to the Coughlins, the Sullivans, that he was at the, he was living at the Fennel House for a while, quite a while. And he died, he passed a few days ago. And I just, I'm just, it's one of those, I could tell you some childhood memories, some teenage memories of this man. And, you know, during these times of tough times, it's when you have things in a family happening, especially as the world was rocked by this horrible disease. While it was rocked by this horrible disease, and then we have what's going on right now, I think it's about time everybody all smartened up and think about bringing peace to this country instead of what's going on right now. So, and I hope my friend Ken Sullivan Senior is resting in peace. Thank you. Thank you for the time. And Mrs. President, Mrs. President, Mrs. Presidents, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Very well said. I completely agree. I think that with everything that's been going on with this pandemic, and, you know, I know quite a number of faith leaders are looking at today as a national day of remembrance for all those that we've lost to this pandemic. And so to many of my colleagues' points, you know, there is national unrest and, you know, a lot that people are really trying to step up and really just address these injustices that we're facing. And so too are we experiencing a lot of personal loss here personally and locally as well. And I think that in these challenging times, I want to stop and thank and commend all of you for continuing to be so present and to be here together. I think that it's really important, particularly for our community here in Quincy, to see all of us, all of their counselors, you know, working together to make sure that we are here for the community and that we do step up and that we are here for them. So I want to thank all of you for continuing to be so present and continuing to be here and so focused on this work in front of us as we go through these challenging times. And I cannot think of a better team of people to go through these times with. So thank you to my colleagues, really, for everything that you guys have been doing through these tough times. With that, if there's nothing else, we will move on to motions, orders and resolutions. Okay, seeing none. Scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings. Our next and last regularly scheduled city council meeting before the summer is going to be on Monday, June 15. I'm going to just take a quick peek around to my committee chairs and see if there's any schedule that needs to get done. Okay, seeing none. See, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Counselor. Everyone, please be safe, and thank you all again for what you've been doing.
Thank you, everybody. Stay safe.
Good night.
Bye.